We're gonna go ahead and get this city council meeting. For Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. Started at 6:52 PM. I'm gonna silence. Councilmember Castaneda?
Here.
Councilmember Sotelo?
Yeah.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Here.
Councilmember Gobala?
Here.
And Councilmember De La Paga?
Here.
Can I get a vote on the meeting agenda?
I make a motion to the vote on the meeting agenda. Motion by Diane.
Second by Vera. All in favor?
Aye.
And your post? Motion carried. Okay, this time we're gonna go ahead and have visitors' comments. Do you have something you'd like to bring to the council? Just keep in mind that we do not answer anybody. We're just here to listen. So if you'd like to step up to the podium? State your name and address.
I don't know if you all just, so you have another second now? I have a couple of things I want to talk about. Who has the authority to write up resolutions? Because right now, you just sit there. Then two ladies over there were gonna take care of writing up a resolution. So they have the authority to do it. Why can't one of us, or me, write one up myself? I thought that was up to the council to write up resolutions. I know I'm not gonna be able to answer, but it's something that you guys need to, at least with the public, know about. If that's the case, I'm sure a lot of people are gonna be willing to write up resolutions and they got the authority to do it. Another thing. This police department thing, as far as the sheriffs go, my understanding is that's just for 911 calls. That's not for them to come out and assist. They can't assist without the police department's permission, or unless the police department requests assistance. So, and then another thing, my understanding is that for the past two years, the sheriff's department had a contract on the table, but it was pulled right at the very end. And that's why the sheriff's department didn't want to do nothing with Mathieu. And that's a reliable source. You know, so, I don't know what kind of contract you guys are submitting to the sheriff's department, but my understanding is just the 911 calls. What's the deal with the police officers? One officer ain't cutting it. That's my personal opinion. One officer ain't cutting it. And then his hours vary. He doesn't have a certain hour to come in and go home. You know, sometimes he's on days, sometimes he's on nights. Not even to deter the problems that we're having right now, as far as break-ins and things like that. You know, so, I don't see why hiring police officers is not a priority. You would think that would be your number one priority right now. You know, so I don't know what you guys, you know, what you guys are thinking about, what kind of plan you guys have, but I'm sure this guy right here needs help. I mean, if we can see it as citizens, I'm sure you guys can see it. Then again, I don't know who has the authority to do the hiring. Because we do need police officers to control these streets. He could be out there patrolling right now, but he's in here, because he's the only guy we have on duty. You know, that doesn't make no sense. What about if something was to happen right now? You know, who's gonna, who's gonna go to that call? You'd have to go to the sheriff's department first, and then he gets dispatched. They call him to let him know what's going on. And then he's gotta go. By that time, shit could already hit the fan. Somebody could be laying down dead. Somebody could have gotten shot. You know, I mean, who knows? There could be an overdose. You know, things like that. Are you guys even taking these things into consideration? Because to me, that's pretty concerning. You know, so I hope you guys, uh, put the police department on your highest priority list and just try to do something about that before anything else. I mean, that's, that's how I understand it.
So, my name is Kevin Gartral. I have two properties, one in the city of Yakima and one outside the city of Waukegan. I live in the county. Thank you. Guess I'm not as short. Sorry, my name is Kevin Gartral. I live in the city of, outside the city of Waukegan, and I have property in the city of Yakima. The reason I am here today is basically because of your last meeting, according to resolutions, is that you guys passed a resolution during your special meeting, which according to state law, second-class city councils may not pass an ordinance approved contract or provide for the payment of money at a special meeting as RCW 3523-181. A town council will not pass a resolution or order the payment of money at a special meeting, RCW 3527-270. The council of the second-class city, towns, and code cities may not pass a franchise and/or ordinance at a special meeting, RCW 3523-251, RCW 3527-330, and RCW 35A-47.040. Then it goes into talking about commissioner meetings. You passed a resolution in your last meeting, which was legal according to your MSRC, which you all take every year you're elected as the city council member, whether new or re-elected. You go through those procedures every single cycle. I never taught those. It's a free class that's given by the state of Washington and various departments. Why that resolution wasn't waited till today is a little bit weird, because most cities would have waited to a normal meeting, which is procedural. Now, I know, understand this normal, the city tends to do things a little abnormal compared to other cities, which is okay. It's okay to be abnormal. But that is my concern, is that these should be happening in these meetings. The second concern I have with that resolution is that Yakima County Commissioners were already proceeding with an EPA grant. They were already proceeding with a community Latino fund to proceed with application process, which was to go to the city of Mathieu. You clearly did not communicate to your upper government entities and communicate with them to see what they were doing for you already to prioritize your water. The only reason an organization would try to interfere with that is if they were trying to get personal funds for their organization, which comes out of the grant. As a grant writer, I wrote the grant for $357,000 for the city of Union Gap for a town youth park. Specifically, grant writers do get paid through that process. They get paid through their labor, they get paid through any services rendered into that grant. Once the grant is accepted, it gets distributed through disbursement of that grant. So there's always a incentive to that. Second is there's no need for a 501(c)(4) to ever be involved in that grant. You should be using 501(c)(3), those are nonprofit entities that have no political affiliation or practice any kind of political advertising, unlike the entity that you have been discussing with, which is a 501(c)(4) and is rented on its website as a political advising firm. Your previous attorney, I assume you're the attorney, yep, sorry. Previous attorney warned you about this. You fired him when he warned you about this. This problem Mathieu is going through is six years old. That's a problem. It should have been solved a long time ago, and you have a county wanting to help you. The other thing is this entity is not capable of reporting its own books. So how is it gonna be capable of reporting any of this grant funding if it can't even do the simple task of reporting when it just ran through an election cycle? Ea Adelante should have provided sponsor information on the mailer as required by RCW 4217-A320, and would have done so if it was aware of the law. By the way, this is their attorney, not mine. An alternative response is appropriate here in case due. Rather than perform an investigation or adjudicated proceeding, the PDC recognizes alternative responses may represent a more efficient and effective way of use of public funds. Their attorney is asking for the PDC to end investigation. It appears that noncompliance results from a good faith error, omission of misunderstanding. Ea Adelante, the mistake, this mistake was unintentional, committed out of ignorance of the law. The impact of the offenses is minimal. Ea Adelante is a small, relatively unsophisticated organization. Again, this is their attorney that they authorized and signed on this letter, which you can obtain from the PDC site. And it goes on, and they even call themselves ignorant. You are hiring a baby organization that has not been, has not done any major grant writing, and has properly reported any of that. You are a city, you have resources that are in your repertoire. You can go to your permission.
So I'm glad that this person spoke before me and thinks he knows more than your own legal counsel, who allowed the resolution to take place last week in a special meeting. And it's interesting to think that he knows more about our organization than I do. So we are a C3 organization. That is Ea, Empowering Latina Leadership in Action, is a C3 organization. His research, obviously, is very spotty, because he wasn't able to pick that up. Ea Adelante is our C4 organization. That is not the organization that presented to you last week about a resolution for collaboration. And in terms of grant writing, we don't make a single cent from EPA to write a grant. We do not get to retro-pay ourselves if we were to receive any grant. We lose out on any investment that we made in my time in order to write up a grant. If he knew grants, he would know that. Apparently, he doesn't know grants that well. And yeah, we may be a fairly new organization of a little over three years, but this organization has been able to capture at least $1.3 million for our organization, both organizations, over the last just year. So, yeah, I think I'm pretty good at grant writing. And in terms of allowing our attorneys to do the work of answering for Ea, when really the only issue was that we forgot to put "paid for" by Ea. But we're such novices that we were able to flip four seats in Sunnyside last year. We're such novices and such a baby organization that we could threaten to sue the city, the school board, and yet get them to settle so that we could change our electoral system from at-large to by district. We're such novices that next year we will have all five school board seats come up for election with three of those districts being Latino majority. So, no, novice, no, he couldn't do that work, even if he tried. But if you want more information about the EPA grant, it sounds to me, from having had just a basic discussion with Ben, that it may not even be possible, according to them, because you have city, the city mayor, city staff, that won't necessarily, because of budget issues, work with Ray and Osborne to make sure that that happens. Although you guys can choose to designate over $3,000 or however much you all are wanting to dedicate to a website, you guys found the money for that. And yet, Ray and Osborne can't come to the table because you have budget issues. So, go figure. We're willing to put in the work. If you all can't, for whatever reason, come to the table, that's fine. But I've never charged you all a single cent. EPA would never pay a single cent for any of the work that we've already put into that grant. Anything else wanna say something? Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna Ben is saying, yeah, he has
He goes after whoever's left.
Yeah. Can we give up our time too?
No, I was just gonna, I just wanted to say, as far as the budget goes, she just told you guys that there's a lot more to it than where she's at, where she's at right now. She has a lot, a lot further to go. So I can't understand where all this money coming from, when she don't even know how much money is available. That's, that's, that's one thing that I just don't understand. Where does all this money come from? Well, we don't even know how much money is available. But then again, we're willing to spend left and right for things that, is it a water, is it a need? That computer program, is it really a want or is it a need? You know, especially for $350,000, whatever the amount is, that's quite a bit, that's a good chunk of change. You know, so, something just doesn't add up, something's just not making sense at all, as far as the money goes. You know, but then again, that's totally up to you guys to decide what you guys wanna do. I'm just, I'm just bringing up a concern of mine.
Good morning, that's Southern Rose Street.
A little, yeah, let's get closer to it.
I have a question, and I know that you can't answer it. But my thing is, like Ruben just said, they don't know what is in the budget. So how could the council okay this grant? Or for this contract for her? How can you do that if you don't know what is in the budget? And I kinda wanted an answer, but earlier you said that you weren't here to answer any questions. Okay? That is kind of putting the city into a financial situation, because the attorney told you that it could fall back on. And the ones that are gonna have to pay, if it does, are the citizens, right? So I, I think that's kind of, my opinion, is that the council has gone down on their oath of office against the city, because this is not what is best for the city. There are a lot of other, when I talked to Vera about it, she said it's a nonprofit, but there are a lot of other nonprofits. When I talked to the lawyer about this, that they cannot vote on special meetings, and he gave me some answers, but right now, when this young man said it, you know, it just seems like it was contradicting what you were saying, but you told me that, that special meeting. So, I feel that maybe this, what you guys voted on in the special meeting, could be canceled until you know, at least until you know what is in the budget. Because I know that a lot of the residents are not gonna wanna be responsible for paying or having our water bills up because of that. Thank you. Thank you, indeed. Anyone else?
Okay, we're gonna go ahead in the launch. We're gonna go to consent agenda. I can get a motion for the consent agenda, A through F, or yeah, through F, please.
I made a motion on the consent agenda from A through F.
Motion by Diane. Second by Vera, all in favor?
Discussion first, please. You get a person to say that you have to ask for a discussion, because someone wants to talk about. Well, I just have one question only. We've decided that to do unnecessary spending, but we're still paying for a quarter potty every month or every two weeks, $140? That's just sitting over at the water sewer plant. We, we thought, we thought we asked to get rid of that.
We leave it out there for about a cemetery.
So the cemetery are people to use?
No, when we have the funerals.
But it's a wastewater treatment plant. It's not a
No, we, we pull it out. They, they pull it out to the cemetery.
They've never had a quarter potty at funerals.
No, we started having it.
But meanwhile, we're paying $140 every two weeks or every month, just to sit there?
It's gonna be canceled, right?
That's why
For the winter, yeah. And then, once the spring comes, yes, in December, so it will be canceled. And we're still having funerals up until this week.
I've never been at the funeral before that I've been to, but I don't know.
Well, maybe you need to go out there every time we have a funeral, I'll call you.
No, thank you.
There's some bills I can't find on these sheets that you guys gave us.
You want to address it afterward, or is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you see else?
Oh, yes, where you want.
There was a, there was a bill for a certain, a certain day when the, for the previous attorney, he was no longer contracted with us. Were we paying for him for something that he wasn't contracted with us? What's the date? 22nd of August.
If you do an itemized press? Well, if you, we could ask and double-check the contract. Okay. Okay. And that was, the date was again?
The 22nd of August. So we're gonna take this out of the
It just addresses which amount? On here, it's Just the one amount.
Just the one amount, it doesn't say. It just says one hour and then .3 of an hour.
And it doesn't say how much the rate
Oh, yeah.
Well, it just say minus that date and that.
I didn't make the motion.
To make a motion on the bill statement for the attorney that we have on August 22nd, 24. During move.
Final motion by Diane. Second by Vera. All in favor? Can you get both? Motion carried. So now we're gonna go into public hearing. And it is 7:14. Jameson? Are you there?
Yes, I'm here, sorry about that. Um, I have, I have prepared the budget ordinance for council to consider for the 2024 budget. Again, as we've discussed before, the city is currently operating without a budget for 2024. And so it's imperative that, in order to be operating legally, that the city does pass a budget. These numbers are based on the actuals that have been spent and sort of a best estimate. But the, there's still a lot of work to do on the accounting to get everything straightened out. But I don't think that the council should wait on passing this, because all those checks that get sent out are technically, you know, not legal until you pass a budget. So while we understand that there's probably gonna be an adjustment as I get through more of the accounting audit, and we can do a budget amendment closer to the end of the year, I do think it's important that the council authorize the budget to, to basically legalize the expenditure of city funds.
Online that wants to add anything? Mike?
About the budget?
About the budget.
It's about the budget.
Our 2024 budget. Excuse me?
Yes.
Mayor Tral, up right outside of Waukegan, city of Yakima. According to your budget, you brought a lot of negatives here. All ironically, the cemeteries, city streets, oh, sorry, city streets. Sorry, I can't read that. Cemetery fund, water fund, garbage fund, custodial fund. I hate to break it to you, but assuming these numbers are right, I don't, you're gonna have to raise taxes a lot. You're gonna end up doing that, I believe. I'm not quite certain, we'll probably know more than that, but I think that has to end up going to a vote of the people when it's raised by that much, if it's more than 1%. The only way you're gonna get around that is by taxing. Otherwise, suggestion B is you could unincorporate the city of Mathieu and give it back to the Yakima population, and they might fix the problem. But that's quite the negative. And usually, right now, it's very unpopular to raise taxes, as you can see with utility taxes and polling on that. So, I don't know how you're gonna fix that. My suggestion is, again, you should reach out to your county commissioners to help your city. Because I don't think you can fix that with a tax hike without going to the people.
Jameson, do you have anything to add?
Just in regards to raising taxes, we actually, the cemetery fund is funded, some in general fund taxes, that comes from sales tax, property tax, and utility tax. But the water fund and the garbage fund are enterprise funds, so they can't be supported with tax revenue. Anyway, they do, they're, they're rate-based, so we have to set rates that sufficiently cover the costs in those funds. And yes, the, the speaker is correct, there, there's a long-term problem. Since 2016, I believe, was the first year that the city had negative fund balances in various funds. It's a long-term problem that has been extending back, and the city does need to work to get it straightened out. And, and hopefully, we will continue doing that. But it, it can't all be fixed, even if, even if we did raise all the taxes, it wouldn't be able to fix the enterprise fund. So there's a lot of other kinds of work that needs to be done, including rate setting and just updating accounting procedures and, and many other things.
Okay, thank you, Jameson. And with that, we're gonna go ahead and end the public hearing at 7:19. And then we're gonna go on to the final budget for 2024. On seven, the whole business, a tool of the ordinance to obtain the budget for the city of Mathieu, Washington, for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, which is on page 25 to 28.
If I may, I would like to say, I know that no one is stepping up to make a motion, and I understand the concerns with the accuracy of the numbers. However, the council really does need to pass a budget in order to operate legally. And I understand saying, looking at your entire budget and looking at your financial history and saying, well, we're already doing so many things wrong, why does this matter? Well, we can't keep kicking the can down the road. We do need to start getting it fixed. And so I think it would be in the council's best interest to pass a budget.
I think we can do table it.
You guys realize if you I'm just saying, through that brain, it's gonna just the one number. We don't have any so, um.
she already asked.
Yeah, twice.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to eight. New business, approval of resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with civic plus municipal websites for website design and hosting solutions. Um, that we talked about on page 29 to 51. So, um, if I can get a motion. That would be the website.
I made a motion on the new business approval of resolution for authorizing the mayor to create a contract with the civil plus municipal website for website design or solutions.
I have a motion by Diane. But, yeah, second by Vera, all in favor?
So then we're gonna spend more money not knowing what we have now to change this website thing. Couldn't you just wait till the next year when the budgets are all done? We still don't have a budget.
This will go, this will go on the budget for 2025. And I believe when we were in that, so we have to walk into this price before the end of the year in order to get that, um, discount that's there. But I haven't. So I have a motion by Diane, submitted by Vera. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Do a recall vote?
So, uh, I did. We're going to be approval of a resolution authorizing execution of a law enforcement assistance agreement between the city of Napton and the Yakima County Sheriff's Office for communication.
I, I heard him.
Approval of resolution authorizing the execution of a law enforcement assistant agreement between the city of Napton and the Yakima County Sheriff's Office for Communication Services. On page 52 to 56. So this is, um, what we signed yearly. We got the same.
Same. And this is just for 911 calls, correct? And they just, they call our officer? And this has to be done every year because they're the ones that, that monitor our 911 calls.
You know, always if there's not an officer, like I called shots fired, they said not matter. So there are times I'm not sure how to name.
I see no chance. Yeah, they have to monitor our 911.
The audience needs to stop.
We have to have a, this contract with them, but it didn't change. It's the same amount as we.
And we did have a meeting with them, um, a couple of weeks ago, they, they said they would, um, come out for emergencies. And, uh, we were in that meeting with Adele and a couple of the other sheriffs, so emergencies, they'll, they will, they will respond. So, um, if I can get a motion for the approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of law enforcement assistance between the city of Napton and Yakima County Sheriff's Office for Communication Services.
I made a motion for number B, approval of resolution authorizing execution of law enforcement's assistance agreement between the city of Napton and Yakima County Sheriff's Office for Communication Services.
I have a motion by Diane.
I'll second.
Oh, discussion? Any discussion?
I'll give a second. Yeah, no, I have no more discussions.
So Diane and Sophie. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so, um, council member reports. Diane?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of things to say. Um, we're short officers and I can tell you why. Cause there was a few people in here that didn't want the chief and didn't want one of the other officers because they weren't doing their job.
You speaking to the mic?
The reason we don't have a chief and the reason we don't have another deputy is officer is because there was somebody here that didn't want them, that they weren't doing their job. Oh, I'm sorry, we were doing the job and they were here. So that's all I have to say. That's why we're having officers.
I mean, I, the, the residents are not to be making comments.
Looking at it.
I'm just looking at the audience, sorry. Sophie, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I do. So about the resolutions, it's mostly, it used to be staff's job to write resolutions, but we found out that council members can write resolutions as well. I don't think, I don't think residents can write resolutions. They can bring the idea, can they?
No, they cannot.
Oh, the attorneys do. And then I saw if the, if this counts, I mean, if the citizens have questions or want something brought up, then they bring it to us and then we discuss it and see if we're gonna put that as a resolution ordinance. Um, and we did talk about the contracts, the sheriff's contract, they do have to respond to our 911 calls because if we don't contract with them, we have nobody who will answer our 911 calls. PD hiring, I think we need to start looking into the PD hiring because I, I was told it was in, um, A W C, A W C, and I was told someone looked and it wasn't in there.
Correct, they are making some changes on that. There was a reason.
So we need to get hi- hirings posted up. I'd like to see you too.
We're, we're in the process.
Glad to see you here.
We're in the process. Yeah.
That's what we've been saying for the last couple of months since the chief's been gone and it hasn't been.
Well, we've been doing it, Sophie. It's not something that happens overnight.
Well, it wasn't in the, it wasn't in A W C like it was supposed to be, like it's, that was told it was in. And then, and about the the grants of working with EPA and ecology, it was the A F group, a couple of citizens from Napton approached the city about our water problems a couple of years ago, a year and a half. And since they got no response from the city, they contacted this organization to help Napton with our water. A F is a, is a, is a nonprofit group who contacted EPA and ecology and, and and so a couple of, a few other entities and, and did meetings to help fix our water problem. This is why they're the ones that do it. There's no nonprofit in Napton who can do this. There's no other nonprofit group who is willing to come and help Napton to, to do these applications for free. A F is the one who's been organizing all these water distributions to the city for free and they're the one that are paying for it. No, I mean, how many citizens would line up around the corner to get water?
I don't know.
No, you don't know because you've never been there, right?
I don't mind up.
I know. You get water at your house.
I didn't get any water this time. They only go to me whenever they want. But I didn't. I didn't get any.
Talk about it, but anyway. This is why A F has been helping. They're the ones that, they're the forking up the money every time they bring all those pallets of water that we hand out. Oh, and the resolution that was passed, we told, we could pay to do these resolutions and no money, no money has been paid to anybody.
Hey, come on, let's stop, please. If you want to take it outside so you can talk, take it outside, please.
Okay, now that's it for me. Thank you.
Here? Yeah, we have quite a few coming up actually. So, um, this Saturday. Oh, TV, do you have? Ben? Um, so this Saturday, we do have a senior citizen bingo slash, um, turkey dinner and that's being put on by some community members. So that's going to be taking place right here at the Blue Sky, the second, at the new additions that they put. So, um, that's all being donated, the turkey dinner. Uh, they're gonna have bingo, um, kickball for the seniors. I know they did it for downtown for hard stuff. So, um, so it's for 55 and over and, um, we're asking, you know, the senior citizens, if you know anybody who wants to come out and have a good time, uh, we'll be out there serving, um, the food as well. It's from four to seven.
So this Saturday?
Come, a couple of community members. I know Norma Martinez, um, from Mon Rosa, um, Maria, oh, Phyllis. Um, I know my daughters are helping out doing gift baskets, so, yeah. Yeah, 89 years old, but she's helping. So, um, we have that, um, coming up for this weekend. So, um, Lottie, Sylvia, do you guys have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Okay, but that, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 7:32. Okay.